Thank you for joining us this evening for the October first, twenty twenty four, Montessorino Regular City Council Meeting. Before the meeting is called to order, I would like to point out a few house rules to assist council members, staff, and members of the public successfully participating in this meeting. For tonight's meeting, you can use Zoom to allow public participation with regular city council meeting. For those using Zoom to participate, there are two icons, chat and raise hand. Please use chat only to report technical issues such as being unable to hear council members speaking. Please use raise hand to be recognized by the mayor and be able to speak to the council. Only attendees using the Zoom application can use the raise hand option to comment. Participants calling in from a telephone will only be able to listen and cannot provide feedback or public comment. Lastly, when we're not all in the same room, all Zoom meetings must be taken by one.
Welcome, everybody. It is seven o'clock sharp, and I'd like to call the meeting of the Montessorino City Council, October first, to order at seven P M. Let's start with the pledge of allegiance. The deputy chief La Fuente has agreed to lead us to the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge my flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own. Thank you.
Moving on to the roll call, please.
Councilmember Turner, here. Councilmember, sorry, Chuck.
President.
Councilmember Lahey.
Present.
Vice Mayor Craig.
Here.
Mayor Wolsheimer.
Present.
Moving on, orders of the day. The mayor or majority council may change the order of business. Does anybody want to change anything? This is also in time for council members to make announcements. Does anybody have any announcements they wish to make? Saying none, we will move on to presentations. Today, we have the annual presentation of the Santa Clara County Fire Department. Floor is all yours.
Thank you, Mayor Council. It's good to see you again. My name is Dennis Lally. I'm our deputy chief of training for the Santa Clara County Fire Department. And I'm your liaison here for the city of Montessorino. We have a short presentation for you with our update for October. And to start off with, we'd like to give you just a brief updated department overview video for you. So we can go ahead and start that next slide. We can go ahead and play that.
Sorry, give me one second.
No problem.
I've got to pull it up on the screen or else it won't. We will be able to hear it. This one right here, correct?
That's correct.
The Santa Clara County Fire Department's mission is all hazards, all risk. That means within the response service area that encompasses the seven cities and towns, we respond to anything that needs to be mitigated in partnership with our law enforcement officers or our EMS partners. What separates Santa Clara County Fire Department from other fire departments is really our complexity. County Fire prides itself on our ability to lead, not just on the battlefields, but also in terms of strategic planning and through the county as a whole.
Santa Clara County Fire Department covers about one hundred and thirty-two square miles. They serve over two hundred and twenty-five thousand residents. The all-risk piece for us is we do everything from EMS, high-rise, rescue, fires. Wildland urban interface is a big part of our agency. You have to be ready for anything that comes at us within the jurisdiction or outside the jurisdiction.
The Santa Clara County Fire Department provides mutual aid through the Office of Emergency Services California Fire Rescue Branch. And part of that is when large fires are burning in the state of California, requests go out from other fire agencies to provide resources. So Santa Clara County Fire Department has the ability to provide its own strike team of wildland firefighting engines anywhere in the state of California. And we've actually traveled to other states to assist in some of the larger fires in Oregon, Nevada, and Montana. So we want to be able to have not only that capability to respond to wildfires within our own jurisdiction, but we want to be able to provide that to other jurisdictions as well in their time of need. Part of mutual aid is that when a fire of that magnitude occurs within our own jurisdiction, we can request mutual aid. So it really is neighbor helping neighbor. It is part of a cooperative spirit of fire service throughout the state of California and really throughout the nation.
The Fire Prevention Office is primarily concerned with engineering and development side and also inspection, field inspections for properties, so both annual and for construction inspections. Our public education model includes contacting the citizens and the different hazards that exist, helping them understand those situations more and knowing where to call or what resources to use in order to help them make their homes and their properties safe. Our community education and risk reduction efforts here are very well developed. Not a lot of places have the number of headcount. This shows a true commitment for us to really identify those areas where we can help and then actually be there in support to education, whether it be multiple cities and towns, things to be open to just about anybody that actually has a need. I think that for county fire, I feel like we have a real strength there. And that's one that I'm actually extremely proud of because I believe it's going in the direction of our prevention model that has been pushed out nationally.
Fire management is crucial because of the risks that we have here in our community. A lot of our community lives in the mountains and is covered in hazardous vegetation. Much of it is mature stands of brush and timber, much of which hasn't burned for decades. And so we really do have a high risk of fire, and therefore we have a responsibility to mitigate. Our community wildfire specialist is a key point of contact for those communities so that they can not only learn about what they can do as a community, but also as individuals to be prepared. So that all requires significant outreach, not just with our stakeholders, but also with our communities.
The fire department's future is very exciting. It's also very challenging because as we look at things like autonomous vehicles, artificial intelligence or man-made intelligence, the fact that what we do know is population continues to grow, and it's always a challenge to get to the call. These are things that are both challenges and really exciting for fire departments. The toolbox keeps getting bigger, keeps getting more sophisticated, but the fire service will meet that challenge. And whatever evolution in terms of just technology throws at the fire service, I am confident the fire service will need, adapt, and actually harness that power into making our model of responding quickly, efficiently, with courtesy and service the primary beacon for years and decades to come.
All right, so just a little overview of the services that we provide that you receive as part of the fire district. It's all hazard. We respond day and night. And before I go any further, just want to introduce Acting Assistant Fire Chief Mark Schumay. He oversees our operations division, our training division, as well as our fire permission division, and then our senior firefighter for the whole fire department, Battalion Chief Jim La Fuente. Without him, we'd all be lost. His experience has helped so many of us to succeed, so glad to have him here this night. So we can move to the next slide, just a little bit about what you have here in Montessorino. You have Keto Fire Station here right down the road. We feel it is still adequately served. We have a pretty much a brand-new engine, which is actually going to come up for replacement in the next few years. That apparatus is really uniquely situated to respond to the unique hazards we have here in Montessorino. We know we still have the windy roads, thick vegetation, and we still have the same emergency problems that we have year to year. But thankfully, you as a community have done well. If we go to the next slide, we can look at just a brief snapshot. Now, it's really tiny print, but you have about two hundred and thirty-nine calls to service last year out of the Keto Fire Station. That's within ten or so of the count from the year prior. And it was actually a decrease of ten. So kudos to the community for continuing to work to be a safe community and to try to avoid calling for nine-one-one assistance for any and everything. Part of the reasons why that's successful, if we go to the next slide, is because we have a robust program for community education and risk reduction. In this past year, we had eight programs that were conducted that reached one hundred and ninety-one Montessorinos. And so it's just another reminder for all of our public, either if we can get the program here or in the adjoining communities, all of this helps with our community to be a safer community. So glad that they were able to get those particular courses out. You can again go to our website where you can see the many different course offerings that may be of need or of use to the community. We move to the next slide. We'll talk a little bit about emergency alerts and warnings. Just as we did last year, we continue to advocate for our residents to register for Alert SCC, which is the official alert and warning system here in Santa Clara County. And you're going to receive those alerts via zip code, either by phone or by text or email. Also by signing up for that, that allows our County Office of Emergency Management to assist when they're doing like the wireless alerts and things of that sort. Additionally, in the years past, we talked about Zone Haven, and they were purchased by a company called Genesis. And Genesis is an evacuation zone product. And so we also advocate for you to sign up there. One of the benefits of them being purchased and upgraded is they also have a mobile app now. And so that mobile app, once you sign up, it can alert you to any changes of your zone right there on your phone. So again, we advocate for both Alert SCC and Genesis Protect on the websites there on the presentation. Just a few accomplishments in the next slide. We grew our Vassana Fire Fuel Crew from eight to ten persons. That position or that program continues to grow. They completed seven protective fuel break projects here in the fire district throughout the area. And they continue to work really closely with those jurisdictions, especially the land management jurisdictions over this past year to work on those larger fuel break projects that were really helped to thin out the fuel maybe out just on the edges of town. The Community Wildfire Protection Plan was completed last year, and the annexes are still in progress. So each of the cities has had an opportunity to contribute to those, and those will be completed by December. I mentioned we have Acting Assistant Chief Schumay here. We've added an additional Assistant Fire Chief just to help increase the capacity of the work that has to be done. We have so many critical infrastructure products that are in place. We have so much going on with operations. It became just unwieldy for one person to handle it, so we're very happy to have him in that position. Our Assistant Chief, Chief Glass, who you're probably familiar with, now oversees the Support Services Division, does all our critical infrastructure, our IT Division and our Administration Planning Division. And so they have a heavy lift, or he has a heavy lift for everything. We also combined our Public Information Office and our Community Education Program. And so now all of the people that communicate outward to the public are situated together. They have access to the data they need to course program and course direct according to the data that we receive. And so really happy to have that team working together. We are now one year into our new computer-aided dispatch system. And just this past month, we started what's called AVL dispatching, or Automatic Vehicle Location Services Dispatching, which basically dispatches the closest unit, if it's out of the station, to the incident. And so we've seen real successes in the upgrade. It's really not only helped us to quicker dispatch our services, but it's also helped to bolster our dispatch center. We can go to the next slide. Few capital improvements to talk about. We finally received some new apparatus. I believe last year we talked about this and we said, hey, they're coming soon. Well, we've seen every manner of supply chain issues going on. And so we finally received those three apparatus. One is right here down the street at the Saratoga Fire Station. Those three are in service now. I'm sorry, I think two out of the three are in service. The third should be done this week or next. And then we're looking forward to ordering our next set of fire engines for which, I bear might not be right, Engine seventy-eight, which is right down the street, may be one of those. So constantly trying to keep up with the need to replace our apparatus. And now we're seeing four-year waits. So we're really having to plan ahead when it comes to our critical infrastructure. We were able to work on sustainability items. We're starting to replace some of our small fleet with hybrid vehicles. And so we took delivery of seven hybrid Ford F-150s as well as two hybrid Ford Rangers. And we have more apparatus coming this year. We're looking at the rescue right down the street, Rescue seventy-three, another ladder truck a little further away, as well as another water tender. Water Tender seventy-eight, their keto station was the only water tender we had, which allows us to respond to rural water supply where the hydrants aren't really functional or they have very low flow. We're adding a second water tender to help aid in those efforts. And we can go to the next slide. Lastly, the two biggest critical infrastructure projects that we've done in at least two decades. We opened our Redwood Fire Station up on the hill. That was a complete rebuild. They've been in there for several months, and we're really excited to have that resource there up on the hill in Redwood Estates. But something even closer to home for you all, our new headquarters. We've moved from Lark Avenue, a mile and a half down the street, to Dell Avenue in Campbell, to a much larger facility. We have a one-stop shop for everyone. In years past, we had everyone there at the Lark office. And as we've expanded, we had to expand out to multiple buildings. Now everyone is right back together. And so we'll be glad to invite the council when we have our grand opening. Our goals for 2024, continue to strengthen our partnerships with you, the city, and with the rest of our district partners. Continue developing high-quality education. Again, thus the urge for our public information, our community education programs, and to continue to provide efficient operational area coordination. Just to speak a little bit about that, last year was a quiet fire season. I was just listening to the news today, and they said just under three hundred thousand acres burned last year statewide. That's a very quiet season. This year, right now, it's over a million acres. And so we have been extremely busy this summer coordinating the mutual aid movement around the county and around the state. For perspective, California burns about a million acres a year gateway. But we saw that dip last year, and then it just shot right back up. So all the reason to continue with your mitigation efforts. Next plan is to replace a fire station and eventually to replace our old headquarters building. We're going through a study in the near future to determine how we're going to use that. And then we're really searching high and low for property to replace our training center. And so it is well overdue for replacement. That does it for the presentation. Are there any questions I can answer for you and me and my peers here with me?
Yes, could you explain to us, please, what the service calls are? And the overall numbers, the number of incidents in Montessorino typically, is that typical of what you see in other small cities? Or is Montessorino unique in other ways? I just looked at the numbers, and I'm surprised that we've heard, you know, we have quite a bit of calls.
You're just under, for going by numbers, just under one a day, if we put it in that perspective. And most of your calls, the greatest percentage, over fifty percent, are emergency medical services related. A lot of them are just regular calls for service, which could be a wire down. It could be power outages of that sort. You had very few fire calls this past year, and you had no incidents that were of any significance that we had to report to the city manager and therefore the council. For a small town, you're probably, I won't say probably, I would have to look at other cities, but I would say for a small town, you're probably doing very well for your population. Your population's split just under four thousand, give or take. So for your four thousand residents, under three hundred calls, under a call a day is very good.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any more questions?
You guys are doing a great job. Really appreciate you coming down here every year. I'm trying to figure out, prevention is better than cure. You try to get more equipment, more assets, which is necessary. But you have a lot of trees, like you've looked at trees, pine trees, just a fire. As the fire department looked at eliminating these trees, maybe getting some grants from the state, maybe getting those grants from the city or whoever else could help the homeowners or cut those down. Is that something that's been looked at? I would usually say clear the brushes, and you try to get that done as much as possible. But actually, you know, cutting off some of these fire hazards and trees, is that something that's been looked at?
That's a great question. I recall we had a very similar conversation the last time we were here about the eucalyptus trees, the different pine trees. Some of those trees are right along Highway nine, right on the Caltrans right away. And that's really their jurisdiction to really work with the city on removing those. A lot of these hazardous trees are either on private property or they're on city property. And so if they're on city property, the city can contract out to have those removed. Typically, you require an arborist to come out and, you know, help. If there's, I don't know if you have a permitting process here in the city for removal of trees, but if they're dead or dying, then that offers a way to remove those hazardous trees. If they're on private property, now that's an issue between the homeowner and the city if they want to remove them.
Yeah, I understand that. I'm just trying to see, the fire department gets money from the state to buy fire equipment. Could it also initiate something to get money from the state to remove these trees? And then make that money available to the cities or to the homeowner? Would that be something that would help the fire department? Because then you have less fire to fight because you've cut down the trees or you would help eliminate the trees. So I'm trying to talk about seeing how you guys can help the cities play a role in prevention.
That's another great question or just a good reiteration. So we just wrapped up a grant process where all of the West Valley cities had access to funds from the state. They were passed through, and that's how we funded the first few years of our Vassana Crew. And their specific task was to go out and to mitigate on public land those hazard trees. However, a lot of the trees that you're talking about, again, they're still on private property, either owned by a landlord or the store. So what I'm saying with that, sir, is quite often it's the cities that go out for the grants, and the cities are able to pass through those funds to the fire department.
Yeah, no, I got that. I'm just trying to figure out, is that something that would be useful for the fire department? Without, whether you're private property or public property, you guys are going to be calling to fight those fires. And if you cut those trees off, it's purely for the fire. So we're not asking you to go on private property and cut them. I'm just asking you, is there a potential slight shift in focus where you say, okay, we want some grants from the state, allow us to pay homeowners or pay cities to cut down these trees? And cities would also subsidize it, but it would help to get the resource.
Absolutely. I'd say that the fire departments are absolutely interested in grant funding to do projects that allow us to help mitigate those risks.
That'll be hard to follow. Another thing I wanted to ask you is, I listened to a presentation from the Senator Day, Santa Clara County Executive, Chief Executive. I think his name is Williams if I'm not mistaken. And he was mentioning that in a lot of time, the issue with getting paramedical help, there's not enough paramedics, medics available to either go with the fire department to provide cure or once they put the people in the ambulances and they go to the hospital, the hospital emergency rooms are stacked, and they can't drop them off in time. Have you guys faced that problem?
Absolutely. Absolutely. We are happy to say that post-pandemic, we have worked very hard with our recruiting, with our personnel division to recruit and to hire enough firefighters to where we are within single digits of being fully staffed, which is very rare at this point, not just in the state but around the country, and not just in the fire service, but in every discipline. So right now, I think society is just seeing a crunch when it comes to people doing particular jobs, and they're all trying to play catch-up. So we experienced that. Hiring someone takes around nine months. Once we get them in, there's another eighteen months for them to get their probation to be permanent. And then there's always the attrition of personnel that are retiring. And so I think the fire service as a whole, the emergency medical services as a whole, nursing, I think they're all playing catch-up when it comes to just the delay we had in COVID. But we're very happy to say that for the Santa Clara County Fire Department, we've actually caught up, and we're really happy to be able to say that. Good job. Thank you. No problem.
Any questions?
I have a number of questions and sort of comments. My first question is, I have seen a number of what are called builders remedy projects that are going to be going up in Los Gatos. Fortunately, we don't have any of those in Montessorino, but Montessorino, as you know, is intertwined with Los Gatos. And with those taller buildings and more dense buildings, what's the impact, if any, on the fire department?
Another great question. As you build higher and denser, then you're still going to be increasing your population. You're still going to have the request for service calls for all of your services, water, power, public works, you name it. For the fire department, as they go higher, even though you may be getting to the scene at the same time as any other place in the city, you now have the vertical component of making it to the top. And so depending on how many people are slated to be in those facilities, that's when our Fire Prevention Division works with either the cities or the cities and the developer to try to either place a fire station there in the area or even within one of the facilities so that we can be able to respond to that now new development and all of the new population in a timely fashion.
I was thinking more on the ladder truck side and not just the raw logistics, but.
Well, I can answer that if you like. Okay, thank you. So just to speak to ladder trucks, we have had a change in the style of ladder truck that we purchase. In the past ten years, we went from just having stray trucks to having tractor-drawn aerial apparatus. And so those are the traditional fire trucks you see where someone drives in the front and drives in the back. That allows you to really maneuver in a very tight radius to be able to access some of those much tighter streets. More to the point, with fire prevention, they also, in working with the cities, working with the developers, based on, you probably saw the news story the other day about how they are going to put a secondary access road in right down here for the new development going in right by the school, by the high school. All of those things are workings that happen even before the buildings are built so that we can still have access. But as they get tighter, then yes, we modify the type of apparatus that we purchase.
Hey, I see the ladder trucks at Lark and Winchester in that sort of area all the time. Can you tell us how many hours a year, if you will, your equipment is located in the city limits of Montessorino? Like you talked about GPS and other things, do you have the ability to generate that information quickly and accurately and easily?
Quickly, accurately, and easily depends on the end user. So I would say it's easier for me to have a run a report and then to do. And then to do all the the calculations to make sure we get the report right. It's not something that I'm gonna pull up right, right here. For unit, it's called unit uh reliability. So, that I'm not gonna have right off the top of my head.
Yeah, I I'm asking the theoretical question. And and I I guess I'm wondering if to get to Councilmember Turner's question about, you know, how much time you spend. Working on incidents in the city geographic boundary of the city of Monte Sereno. If if you could get that data, so that we can mirror ourselves to others. The answer is yes.
Yes, we could.
Okay. And I was gonna ask a question on how your recruiting is going, but I think that sounds like it's going well, and I commend you for that.
Thank you.
Um, and then my my final question, and this may be to the battalion captain. Um, we have a youth commission here, and when I was taking leadership Los Gatos, which was with our neighboring town. Um, we had a a tour of the uh Saratoga um uh facility. Would there be any way we could coordinate something for our youth commission uh to to see the keto station?
So, we have a very, very active public education uh bureau. We've had it since nineteen ninety. And it's it's evolved, and they tailor um. Any plans that citizens may have in a specific community. In this case, you would contact our public education division. State exactly what you want for what group, and they can help tailor that. That tour, that station tour for you, whether it be at Saratoga, Keto Station, or even at Los Gatos Station around that.
I I think Keto Station would be would be more relevant than anywhere else.
Yep.
And I'm looking at uh our vice mayor, thinking this may be an idea to bring to to the youth commission and and. Um, I for one would would uh like to join the youth.
You would. So just to give you a little background, what um our pubet division is really good at is. Understanding who is a tour for. In this case, it's a youth commission. So we would tailor the tour. For that group, knowing that they're looking to see what they wanna get into as they get older, as they're in school. And educate them on what we do, and the different opportunities that are available to them in the fire service. Um, because most of the youth have this very narrow range of knowledge of what exactly we do. Uh, and this broadens their horizon. And it also gives them an opportunity to go to um. Go to a place that they only see on TV or pass by when they drive by, and they have no idea what we do.
I I think there's also a benefit in them speaking with their parents.
Absolutely.
Because I have my son and daughter.
Right. When their parents show up, it's it's a double wearing for us, because we can have the impact on both. So, yeah, that's what I encourage you to do.
So I'll I'll get the, or Burton and I'll get the contact information offline.
If you just, uh, I'll I'll be your point of contact for that. We'll make sure we get that taken care of.
Those are my questions.
Is there any new question?
No question.
Okay, uh, first of all, I'd like to thank you, uh, all of you for all the great work that you do, um, keeping us safe year in, year out. It's. It's really very impressive. Uh, I have one question. Um. Um, I've seen a couple of medical emergencies and within Monte Sereno. And I'm always amazed that typically, the equipment that's dispatched is a full-size. Uh, fu- yeah, truck. Do you have any, uh, um, what what's the reason for that? I would think that for a medical emergency, it could be a much smaller, much faster vehicle.
Well, a couple of things for you. Uh, bath isn't always good for shorter. Um, even though we can probably get there about the same time. Um, what you're also getting is the the all-hazard aspect of it. So, um, when you call nine one one. Uh, you're gonna get, depending on the jurisdiction, um, you may get a response from Los Gatos, Monte Sereno P D. Uh, as they transfer the call to the fire department, the fire department has a paramedic on every apparatus. If while we're there, a a fire comes in, or a a vehicle accident, if we were just in a pickup truck. Or a smaller vehicle, it's unlikely that we will be, we would be able to respond from there. To the next incident and and appropriately mitigate uh that incident. Uh, to put that in perspective, probably. Oh, boy, it's probably about eight years ago, maybe, uh, we had a, uh, it was Christmas, and we had a fire here on on Highway nine. Uh, I remember vividly because we also had uh someone that that crashed into a a large tree here on Highway nine. About twenty minutes before that fire was called in. And so, you had resources, myself included, that were on that incident, that then diverted. And began, uh, once we had that incident, uh, you know, solidified. Uh, we were able to leave it with the engine seventy-eight crew as well as the ambulance, and I was able to divert to the new fire. And so that's often. Why that that happens. Uh, in larger um. Organizations where uh it just overwhelms a whole system, they do have squad apparatus like that they can assist.
Alright, thank you.
No problem.
Any further questions, Councilmember?
I have a comment.
Sure.
Um, I just wanted to thank you and let you know that I truly appreciate. The ramp up that you have done with the education program in the last couple of years. I think you're doing an excellent job, and I hope that the Monte Sereno, we get more Monte Sereno residents to attend.
Awesome. Yeah, we're we're happy to see everyone participate. Thank you for that.
Well, unless there's anything else, I will do, thank you again for the both presentation, and again for the all the all the work that you do.
Thank you. It's a pleasure. Thank you.
Moving on to oral communications. First, we wish you to arrest counsel of any matter, because if not, that's upon your agenda may do so at this time. Please, Ms. Alexander.
Hi, everyone. I'm Ruth Alexander, neighbor to the city office. And I sent a um, an email to the mayor. And I'm not sure if this is uh still viable, but um, you know, I'm not sure what is happening with the community center. But one of the things on the email that I suggested was to take a survey. Because recently I've been walking around um with the dog and talking to the residents right around the city office. And they are really wondering, like, some of the new neighbors that own property around here. Like, why are we having this small community room? Uh, because we will not be using it. Now. My suggestion is to take a survey of all the residents or a poll and find out what this, what the people want. Okay, and then um, also, I, a- again, I'm still against anyone closing the entrance. Where the mailbox is. I feel that, uh, talking to other residents too, they disagree with that too. The the residents around here, because ultimately, and uh. Just uh to stop there right now, I do wanna thank all the council members for working for the people. Thank you. Um, but getting back to that, I just feel if you have one entrance and exit, if you're going to do the community room. It doesn't make sense, because it's less, the traffic flow is better if you have two. And this is a pre-existing entryway, so you don't need to do anything with that. And then the the other thing is, uh, oh, I did mention that. I did talk to the neighbors, and yesterday I had a long conversation with a gentleman. Who is, I think he's a physician or a dentist, but anyway, he he said, I cannot understand that route, that I have small children. There will be more traffic and all these things. So, you know, I'm suggesting. It's not what I want, it's what the people want, really. So that's what I'm saying. Take. Take a survey and see what the people want, because ultimately, the council members are going to come and go. But we have been here over thirty-five, forty years, are going to stay here forever. And whatever is done, we affect it, not the council members. You're not affected by all these things. So take that into consideration if possible, and you know, I'll I will see what happens.
Alright, thank you. Thank you. Thank you. I'd like to point out that uh. We had an informational meeting uh earlier forward last week, the Community Center Committee. We'll have another meeting sometime in October, if we don't know yet.
Okay.
And uh, of course, you're welcome to.
Yes, I'd love to be to to attend that. If you can, uh, email me about that too. Um, yes, and I know, um. We have a new council member coming up, Lisa, and I'll be working closely with her too. And 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 then just, I'm sorry, and I will be leading to, one of the other things my suggestion is. Spend a little money to fix it like an office and do what was done before, is rent it out. That way, you're getting money in to the city. Which is what we do with our homes and and my business and stuff. You're trying to get money, and you're not trying to to have a deficit. Anyway, thank you all again, and the best to you all.
Thank you for your comments. Sir, anybody online? Anybody online at all?
Yes, we do.
If if there's anyone in online who wants to uh address the council on something that's not on the agenda, please raise your virtual hand.
No hands are raised.
No hands are raised. I think the previous item also took care of Brits and Communications. I think we all have a copy of the email that Ms. Alexander. Sent in. Moving on, consent calendar. Uh, we have items two, three, and four on the consent calendar. Does anybody want to pull any of the items?
I don't wanna pull any of the items. Uh, I have a couple of of typos, typos that I can give to you that are here. Uh, on the minutes, and uh I would like to um abstain from item number two.
Two or three?
Oh, I'm sorry, three.
Okay, well, sorry. Number three, and separately on a, um, any other? Uh, so anybody, you know, we have chambers here, if anyone online who wishes to comment on the consent calendar items.
I'll make a motion to approve items two and four. Second?
Second, all in favor, please raise your hand.
Aye, aye.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve item number three?
Move to approve item number three in calendar.
And there was second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And we have.
Abstain.
One council member abstaining, so four, zero, one. And previous item, uh, two and four, fast analysis. Moving right along, public hearings, we have none, unfinished business. Feels like we have unfinished business, but announcing on the agenda. Uh, new business. Consider and accept the city manager's report covering April first, through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. May we have a staff report?
Yes, thank you. Um, so anything, mayor, councilmembers, I have Diana Perkins, the city manager. And the report before you tonight covers the last um six months of um some of the administrative items that staff has been working on. Um, I'll highlight just a few of them um for you tonight. One is, um, the staff has submitted for a grant. Um, which the council had previously accepted, um, the award for. And it is for the California Automated Permit Processing Program. Um, this grant was provided to assist local jurisdictions in implementing an online automated permit platform. That verifies code compliance and issued permits in real time for residential solar energy systems. So just last month, the city implemented um this new online permitting. Um, program and for photovoltaic systems and for the backup batteries, um, energy storage systems. The permits are now online, and the customer gets the permit at the time that they submit, or they complete the application. So. They no longer have to submit plans and wait for um a plan review to be completed, which. It was a pretty quick turnaround, usually about three days, but now they get the permit immediately. And um so, as I mentioned, the city has submitted for that grant. The state provided a forty thousand dollar grant to cover the cost of. Um, staff time and for consultants to develop um that software program and to to test it and implement it online. Um, the second item is, I'm sure everybody has. Seen or felt the three speed humps that were installed along the S curve along Dix Avenue in June. Um, that project was directed by the city council, um, due to a history of accidents that have occurred on this portion of the roadway. Um, staff has received positive feedback from the nearby residents. And um can certainly attest to the slowdown of traffic that, of driving along that portion of the roadway that um. The speed humps contribute to. Um, next, staff is also working on some ordinance updates, um, which will be brought to the city council before the end of this year. Some of the proposed provisions will lead to the zoning code and the subdivision code. Um, of the municipal code, and those are required as part of housing element programs. And they are mainly to update our code to be in compliance with current state laws. Um, similarly, to update um our telecommunications requirements. And these are for both personal as well as um wireless telecommunication facilities. Um, so that includes antennas and equipment that are put up by telecommunications, telecommunications providers such as A T and T. Um, our current regulations are fairly dated and have not been updated in quite some time. Um, these types of facilities are regulated by the federal government, and so the ordinance will be updated to comply with the current federal standards. Um, and as I mentioned, both of those ordinances will be brought to the council before the end of this year. On some internal, um, staffing or some internal accomplishments from staff. Our code enforcement officer has been um very busy on code enforcement activities. And we do have a handful of cases that have been going on for several years. And we, he was able to complete and close one of those cases in the past couple of weeks. And I think we have two others that are sort of ongoing, that he continues to work on and and hope to come to some resolution very soon. Um, lastly, staff is also um working on some required training and updated um training. Um, required for municipal um governments. Um, one, not necessarily required training, but the fire department did reach out and offer to provide CPR training to the city. And so we have um for staff scheduled CPR training on Tuesday, November fifth at nine A M, um, in the council chambers. The council members are also invited um to attend that training, and we'll send an email to everybody to remind you of the date and time if you're interested to join us. And that concludes the report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Councilmembers, any questions?
Another question, just a comment. You're doing your CPR on November fifth at nine A M. So that uh, somebody needs help on the day of the election.
We'll be ready. We'll be ready.
Just just as a follow-up to that, does the city have a de- de- defibrillator? I can't even say it's a de- defibrillator.
We do not at this time, but we are looking to get one before the November fifth training.
Okay.
And the training will cover the the defibrillator device also.
Sure.
Uh, how would you propose to regulate uh ham radio antennas? Are you looking at that for now?
Yes, that will be part of the um updated telecommunications ordinance. So. Um, we do have a consultant who's helping us um with this. They will be bringing. I think it's scheduled for the November nineteenth meeting, um, an informational item. To let council know what are some of the regulations that, um, federal regulations that we need to modify our ordinance to. To update and to provide any council input before we actually provide the draft ordinance. So I'll make sure that that is included.
Okay, thank you.
Any other question? In that case, I'll ask for public comment. Is there anybody on here still, is anybody online wishes to comment on this agenda meeting? Please raise your, raise your hand.
No hands are raised.
I'm sorry, councilmembers, one last chance to comment.
There there apparently is another system of telecommunication, and I'm trying to remember where it was. Uh, I'll I'll try to get that information to you, which is a more of a laser-focused system. We operate on a low frequency.
Okay.
Let me reserve some details on that.
All right. In that case, I'd like to thank you for a for a report. It's probably the most complete city manager report we've seen in a while. So thank you very much.
I'll take them back.
We all second that.
Thank you.
All right. So the question is, who wants to move to approve and accept the city manager's report?
So moved. Second?
Second, all in favor, please.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. Soon I can get on to. I think we're. I think we may have a mission report now. Who wants to start?
I'll start. Doesn't need to report.
Councilmember turn.
I'll go with him.
Nothing.
Well, I have a report. BTA Policy Advisory Committee, there is a meeting next week, and I won't be able to attend, and I'm hoping, I take advice by the mayor. Great. Excellent. Thank you. I think it's important to attend because there are grants that are available and we need to have relationships there. And it's also the work on on line seventeen. So I've been working that with with Vice Mayor Hudes and others. So that's that's great if you could attend. West Valley Clean Water, nothing to report. West Valley Solid Waste, they're still having people unhappy with their billing increases, but it is what it is. Silicon Valley Clean Energy, there's a meeting next week on Wednesday, and then Thursday I'm going to the ribbon cutting, which is two hours east of Palm Springs. It's a solar farm, and that's why I can't attend the meeting that evening. And then the week, the right after the council meeting at the second Tuesday or third Tuesday in October, I'm going to Long Beach to the conference. And I just wanted to let the council members know if there's anything you want me to look into because it's a bit of a trade show there, let me know so that I can I can look at things for you. That's everything that I have to report. Oh, I'm sorry. I will also say that the Police Services Ad hoc Committee had a meeting today, and so did the Financial Systems Ad hoc Committee. So sorry, I don't mean to steal your thunder, but I just wanted to.
All right. I think I just said a few things. The Silicon Valley Animal Control Authority meeting was canceled due to lack of corum, none of that people again. Internity City Manager, I had last week attended the meeting of the West Valley Mayor's and Managers, and it was a good meeting. It was a nice update from the from PTA. Some DTA representatives were there and talking about everything that's going on with PTA. So it was very informative, I think. So that's all I have to report. But I can distribute what they have developed with PTA. If anybody sent, I'll give it to you. People can take a look at it at their own leisure. Okay, council member comments. This is your time to make brief announcements or comments.
I just have one quick comment. I saw today that the governor signed AB twenty seven fifteen or something that allows closed sessions to be held regarding cybersecurity issues.
One more thing we can have a closed session about. Let's see. Next on the agenda is the city manager's report, which we just had, I think, for assistance difference.
Well, I do have one other thing that just happened. I believe it was completed on Monday. We have a new fire alarm system in the building, and it bolted actions.
Just in time.
Just in time. So the detectors in the ceiling are new, same location. They look similar. It's a new pull station on the wall, and in the event something tragic in the building, it will call into the station to report.
That's where the fire alarm, but also security alarm.
It is just a fire alarm.
Just a fire. Because I also saw an update going on the alarm system.
Or is that? Yes, it was it. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Future agenda items. So anybody have anything they want to add to future agenda? I do. I had a request today from the Chair of the Development Streets Commission to put the future of the Development Streets Commission on the agenda for one of the next meetings. And I'll leave it like that. So this should be an agenda item for maybe not the next meeting, but maybe in November, where we talk about Development Streets Commission, what part of this or what's the future? Where are they going? All right. And seeing that there are no other regular items, we will now move on to our closed session. Conference with legal counsel. Is there anybody online who wishes to comment on this item? If so, please raise your virtual hand.
No hands are raised.
No hands are raised. In that case, we will now recess the closed session.
Before we, yes, just recent scene to conference with legal counsel existing litigation, government co-section five four nine five six point nine, case Pageant versus Curtis Ray, United States District Court, Northern District of California, San Jose Division. Case number five zero four CB zero three nine four six.
Thank you for that.
And we are back.
We're back. We just came back from our closed session with regards to conference with legal counsel existing litigation government code section five four nine five six dot nine. And there is nothing to report. And since this was the final item on the agenda, I will now adjourn the city council meeting at eight twelve PM.